Okay, the meeting is beginning after resuming from executive session. And we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause). The Pledge of Allegiance. (Applause). The Pledge of Allegiance. (Applause). To the five United States of America and to the body for which it stands, one nation on its ground indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
So our first order of business is to ask our newly-elected board trustees Krista Barati and Scott Seaman to take the oath of office. Krista, would you like to recite?
Sure. I, Krista Barati, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties trustee of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Perfect. Just sign that up. And Mr. Seaman?
Hi, this is Scott Seaman. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Perfect. Thank you. So our first agenda item is the election of officers. And we'll begin with the nomination for President of the Board of Education. Is there a motion to nominate a President?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Sonia Messica as President.
Is there a second motion to nominate a President?
Yes.
Glenn, thank you.
Sonia Messica.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for President? All those in favor? All those opposed? All righty, so if the motion passes 6-0. Congratulations Sonia Messica, you are the President.
(Laughter). I, I, I thank you because it means a lot. I know it's a tough job having done it a year, so we, and we didn't want to jump out there, but thank you for your trust and, you know, working with me to just improve things and it means as much as we can, so thank you. Okay, so now we move on to Vice President of the Board of Education. So we need nominations for that, nominations for Vice President.
I'm going to nominate Carrie.
Is there a second for Carrie? Scott, thank you. Any other nominations for Vice President? Seeing none, all those in favor for Carrie Cunningham for Vice President. And motion passes 6-0, right? Okay. Thank you. And now we move on to Putnam County Legislature Representative. And actually, I called Diane the fore, just to go over, for her to recap for me, just a little bit about the responsibility for this role. We just read what she wrote, what she sent me. So she said it was a few things, because we asked her last year to kind of expand on the role, because we had this role for years and no one really did anything with it. So she said basically, hold on, let's find it, I'm sorry. She had emailed Mary Ellen O'Dough, tried to stay in communication, just letting, you know, giving updates, maybe great things we were doing in the district, or she needed us for anything, and I know she has come to our meetings for different things, so keeping that line of communication open, as well as, hold on. The other thing that she did, yeah, so she was our rep for, I mean, anyone can go, of course, from the Board, but it was kind of her responsibility to make sure she attended. Whenever there are meetings that the Westchester School Boards, Westchester Putnam School Boards Association puts on with our Assemblyman or the Senator, like whoever, they would organize that, so Diane would go and she'd report back. And anyone could go with her, but she made sure, like, you know, she was there. And, you know, and just advocate for our district and kind of getting funding for us and, and keeping that relationship, establishing and keeping it going. So that's kind of the role. And we need one person for that role if anyone is interested, or, you know, it sounds like it might be something you'd be interested in. Yeah? Okay. Anyone else dying to get into that role? No? Okay, so then we'll put down Scott, but I'm thinking we probably would need a motion for Scott.
We should say it requires a motion.
Well, because I think we're doing it each month.
It says election.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion from Scott. Is there a second for Scott? Carrie? And all those in favor for Scott? And motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Okay. And then we move on to Board of Standards Compliance Officer. So basically, what it says, we have our Board Mandating, we have our district policies, and of course, our state ed, you know, education law. And so just this person, we all really hold each other accountable to our responsibilities here, but that person has, takes a special interest in making sure they're up to date on laws and different things, and just bringing to attention for discussion if someone's veering off in a direction that, you know, could be negative. So anyone, is there a motion for, for this position?
I mean, I'll do it if no one else is interested. I don't want to take it from someone else who wants to.
I think Eric was dying to do it.
He's going to get what's left over, I'm sure. Okay, is there a second for Carrie? Krista, thank you. So any other, anyone else? No? Okay, so then all those in favor for Carrie, motion passes 6-0. Okay. Now we move on to, where are we, Appointment of Officers. I just, I think I just read through them, and it's all one, I guess, yeah, one item, but it's still a motion and a second. So Appointment of Officers, one, A District Clerk Susan Gadsden, B District Treasurer Susan Morgan, C Deputy Treasurer Elena Graham Nash, School Business Administrator, D Receiver of Taxes Susan Tabac for Southeast City Carmel, Mary Delany for Patterson, and E Claims Auditor Linda Carpenter. I need a motion and a second, please. Glenn and Carrie, thank you. Any questions or comments on this section? Seeing none, all those in favor? And motion passes 6-0. Okay, other appointments. One, Legal Counsel and Medical Services, A General Counsel Thomas Doohan, Roxton Pettarone LOP, B Bond Counsel Hopkins, Jellifield Wood LOP, C School Physician Dr. Louis Corsaro, D School Athletic Trainer Provider, AON Physical Therapy Wellness. I need a motion and a second, please. Danny and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments? I would like to actually make a comment. Well, and it's a question. So, I think it was about a year ago now, maybe in August, I'm not sure, we discussed an RFP for our attorneys. I did ask them if we approved them, does that somehow commit us to a year? They said, no, like, we can at any time do an RFP, and it's just saying that we continue with that until we're not. And last year, as we know, was insanely busy. We barely got through fitting in everything into the agenda that we needed, and I think we could consider doing an RFP at this time. The only question that I had was, we're about to go into our BTA negotiations, so the question is, do we want to consider an RFP at this time? Or do we want to wait until after BTA negotiations? Is that usually like a year? I mean, how long can?
Typically, you'll want to start with the new fiscal year, you know, July 1st.
Right, right. How long has it in the past potentially gone, how many months?
Oh, how long with negotiations? I want to say the last time around, we began in November and ended in May, late May.
So it could take almost, could take a good chunk of the whole, almost the whole year.
It could.
So that's kind of the question before. So we can continue right now with them, but I think we need to kind of decide, it's time, we haven't done an RFP, it's been almost, I think, 10 years, we did the homework, it's been quite a while. So it's time to do one. It's just whether or not we think right now is the best time, or maybe at the end of the school year, considering we're going to negotiations.
I mean, I would say that it's important to keep consistency with the lawyers that we have for the purpose of these negotiations, because you cannot replace the institutional knowledge that they have, and with the district for, I don't even know how much. And I do think that's important. I don't see, I would think you could still do an RFP.
We could, because that process itself.
Because that's a process. And we don't, you know, we can make a decision that we'll wait, you know, until after negotiations. And you could probably just do it on two, on parallel tracks.
That's true. Because you could always set a start date if it was someone else, right?
Yeah. I mean, you can, we can decide, yeah, whenever we want to.
Okay. Okay, so anyone else have questions or comments on this?
No, the RFP for the lawyers, would that be another thing where we would have to take the lowest bidder?
No. That's different than competitive bidding, an RFP, because it's a professional service. It's really at the discretion of, of the Board and how the RFP is structured, so, excuse me, you would put qualification criteria in. So, you know, if one of the criteria was, you know, prior history with the district, or familiarity with New York State education law, i.e. they work with other school districts, you would put those qualifications in your RFP, and that would be the basis for the Board choosing which firm to go.
So in that, there'd be no reason why we couldn't do an RFP, you know, to make sure that it's, you don't want, especially in something important as this, all of a sudden you have a firm come in without the knowledge, without background, with their lowest, and everything will go back to.
Okay, so for now, they are listed here as the Council continues at the moment, so we just will vote on this as it is listed here. We already have a motion and a second. All those in favor? And the motion passes 6-0. Okay. Now we move on to Audit and Financial Services, A External Auditors O'Connor Davies LOP, P, B Internal Auditors Tobin and Company P.C., C Fiscal Advisors Capital Markets LOP. I need a motion and a second. Carrie and Scott, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Three, Finance and Operations Officers, A Records Management Officer Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations, B Records Access Officer Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, C Annual Budget Report Registars G.G. Farrell, Susan Morgan, Kathy Keane, and Rita Holesky, D Purchasing Agent and Alternates Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations with Michelle Gosh, Assistant Superintendent, and Brent Harrington, Director of Human Resources as alternates, E Asbestos L.E.A.S., slash, A.H.E.R.A., Designee Kenneth Wench, F Chief Emergency Officer Amber Brooks, Director of Facilities. Need a motion and a second, please. Krista and Glenn, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Move on to number four, Human Resources and Student Services Officers, A Title IX Compliance Officers Brent Harrington, Director of Human Resources, and Michelle Gosh, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, B Title VI Officer Michelle Gosh, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, C Section 504 Compliance Officer Elizabeth Kennedy, Director of People Personnel Services, D Residency Officer Arthur Holtzman, E Data Protection Officer Jim Tralor, Director of Technology Innovation, F Dignity for All Students DASA Coordinators High School Carlos Rodriguez, Middle School Christian Hernandez, Intermediate School Keith Allen, Elementary School John Conway, G Attendance Officers High School Carlos Rodriguez, Middle School Christian Hernandez, Intermediate School Keith Allen, Elementary School John Conway. Need a motion and a second, please. Carrie and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Passes 6-0. Committee on Special Education, Special appointments, Impartial Hearing Officers, A Impartial Hearing Officers, B Committee on Special Education, C SE, C Committee on Preschool Special Education, C DSE, D Section 504 Committee. And all those attachments for all of these, you know, are in the Board docs. Need a motion and a second, please. Glenn and Danny, thank you. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. One of, we have a resignation of someone who is listed on some of these committees, so I just wondered how that will work in terms of, obviously, these committees were set up before maybe we knew, but obviously, she's not going to play that role, so this has to be...
As soon as the new person is identified, they will replace the outgoing person.
Oh. So she'll stay that role?
She'll stay until August, and in all likelihood, these committees won't be meeting up in the summer, so she wouldn't be, she wouldn't be serving that capacity in the summer.
Okay. Good?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? And motion passes 6-0. Okay, six, Extra Classroom Activity Fund ECAF Officers, A Central Treasurer High School Robin Welch, Designee Central Treasurer Middle School Paula Clark, C Chief Faculty Counselor High School Nicole Borler, D Chief Faculty Counselor Middle School John Clark, and E Faculty Auditor Susan Morgan. Motion and a second, please. Glenn and Carrie, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion 6-0. Okay, designations. One, A Official Banks and Bank Accounts, B Banks for CD Investment Only Tom Kitz, Mayapack National Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, and then T Bank, C Official Newspapers, The Journal News, Putnam County, County Courier. I need a motion and a second, please. Danny and Scott. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Authorizations. One to certify payrolls, Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations with Elena Nash Graham, School Business Administrator as alternate. Motion and a second, please. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops Attendance Approval Brent Harrington, Director of Human Resources, Michelle Gosh, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Motion and a second, please. Krista and Danny, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Three, Establishment of Petty Cash Funds and Change Funds, A Each School Building $75, B Transportation Department $50, C Child Nutrition Department Change Funds for Four School Buildings $400. Need a motion and a second, please. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Designation of Signatures on Checks, A General Fund School Lunch Fund Agency Fund Payroll Account Special Aid Fund Capital Fund Debt Service Fund and Special Purpose Fund Susan Morgan Treasurer and/or Elena Nash Graham, School Business Administrator and Superintendent of Schools as alternate, B Extra Classroom Activity Fund, One High School Nicole Borler, Robin Welch, Superintendent of Schools, alternate, Two Middle School John Clark, Paula Flower with Superintendent of Schools as alternate. Motion and a second, please. Scott and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments on this?
And I guess we're listing superintendent of schools until she officially becomes superintendent of schools, then I guess it'll be...
Yes, so for July right now, Michelle Gosh is our intern, so should there be any need for anything this month, it would fall on Michelle, and then starting August 1st, it'll be Dr. Van Loon. So whoever carries the title at that moment, yes. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Budget Transfers on Chief School Officers Approval Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations with Elena Nash Graham, School Business Administrator as alternate. Motion and a second. Carrie, Glenn, questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Six Applications for Grandstand A State and Federal Superintendent of Schools and/or Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Motion and a second, please. Danny and Scott, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Participation in Cooperative Services COSOs and Bids with BOSIs Superintendent of Schools and/or Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Need a motion and a second, please. Scott and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, other items. G, One, A Establishment of Mileage Reimbursement Rates Per IRS Statute, B Reauthorization of Vendor-Specific Credit Cards, C Reauthorization of Cell Phone Users, D Faithful Performance Blanket Bond Fiscal Officers, E Readoption of All Existing Policies, Code of Ethics and Public Officers Law Section 18 Protection. Motion and a second, please. Carrie and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments on this item?
Yes, I have one question. On the cell phone users, it lists all the department heads, transportation, this and such, and it has the high school and the middle school principals, but it doesn't have CB-Star and JFK principals. Is there any reason, or do they have any need for having approval?
The reason for that is that those individuals declined the offer from the district, so they weren't listed. I think there's a notation at the bottom of the memo that lets... Yes, those individuals declined.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. H List of Association Memberships, One, A New York State School Boards Association, B Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. Need a motion and a second, please. Glenn and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, so, I, Establishment of Board Committees Membership. You know, before I go on, in front of everyone, there was the, just to, under G, E, we had approved the Code of Ethics for the Board, so everyone should have a copy in front of them, Code of Conduct. So just at some point during the meeting, sign that, if you can turn that into, to Susan, since it was approved now and it's in our policies, so it just, again, goes over what the, for, you know, our role and what our responsibilities are in our conduct, et cetera. So, yeah, we have a chance to take care of that, so I was supposed to make a comment to that. Okay, so Establishment of Board Committees and Membership. One, A Audit Committee, Board of Ed Members, Ms. Messica and Ms. Niles, Tentative Community Members. Should we do each one first? I think I do a motion and a second, and then we'll go through it. Okay, sorry. To determine the Finance Committee Board of Ed Members, Ms. Cunningham, and to determine Tentative Community Members, to be determined, C Policy Committee Board of Ed Members, to be determined, D Brewster Education Foundation Board of Ed Members, Mr. Breston Tentative, and E School Counseling Advisory Committee Board of Ed Members to be determined. So need a motion, please, and a second. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. So now we can have our discussion on this item. And there are some names listed here, just from, I guess, who had the role last year, but if someone, you know, is, wants to get off and try something new. So for Audit, the first one, Glenn, are you still interested in continuing Audit?
Yeah.
Okay. And when I was looking at, you know, how many committees and making sure everyone at least was on one, I could, Danny, last year, we had put you and me, because we weren't sure how you were, you know, and you, I think, were able to make some, were you interested in continuing with Audit? Did they meet in the morning before? Yeah?
Yeah, for installments, it's great.
So Glenn and Mr. Heinz, and I'll, and take my name off.
Sure.
Okay. B is Finance. Carrie, are you interested in continuing?
I'll stay on that.
Okay. And someone, is someone else interested in being on the Finance Committee?
I would like to be on, because I was on as a community member, so I'm willing to stay on the...
Is anyone else dying to get on there? No? Okay, so then, Mr. Smith, for the second person. And C Policy Committee. So Policy, they need generally like 4:30-ish?
Yeah. They'll meet, I believe, either the first board meeting Tuesdays, and I believe they start at either 4:00 or 4:30. 4 o'clock, or, yeah.
First person Tuesdays, 4:00 PM. So I can, I can't ever, I have to be with service and my computer from 4:00 to 5:00 at all times if that is my work window, so I, I will be able to commit to that timeframe. Anyone else possibly do?
I could do that.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm. But I have also...
Yeah? Okay, so Eric and Krista for Policy. Perfect. And then D Brewster Education Foundation, anyone else dying to get on that one? It's a lot more work than, originally it was supposed to be a liaison, I thought just information sharing, it turns into a lot of it. And just also as a commentary, they changed their bylaws to, so that there's one designated board person, which is in their bylaws, but if someone else wanted to be on as a community member, that they could, because they always was just kind of one person that was there, but, okay. So now we move on to the last one, which is the School Counseling Advisory Committee, which is new. It's mandated also with the new regs. So I'm not sure yet, I don't think that they pieced together their, the timeframe for meeting for that, but it's going to include community members, teachers, the mental health professionals in the district, and Board members. So I don't know the time yet, but, you know, is anyone interested in that one? Krista? Anyone else? I could put myself on that one, because I'm not officially designated to anything yet, so, so everyone's done at least something, yes? Okay. So Krista and myself? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think they got through that. So now we've discussed it, and we just need a vote, as discussed. All those in favor? Motion passes 7-0. Okay. And just to, so we, before we move on to the action items, it just, I should have said this in the beginning, but I'll say it now. So all these things that we just went through, kind of just for the record, sorry, I broke down, I figured I gave you the language. So they are defined by law, and they are in our policies, our Board Policies, general municipal law, education law, the Commissioners', regulations, and best practices in education in general. So all these things that we just went through have to be taken care of at our reorganization meeting. So while it may seem like we're just saying a yes to a lot of things, we're required to go, and we can say no, but I'm not sure how that would work out, since we have to put these things into place. Okay, so with that said, we can move on to any public remarks as they relate to the action items on today's agenda. Anyone has anything to say specific to our action items? You're welcome. Nope? Okay, so we will move on then to action items. Okay, so we will move on then to action items. One, approval of contracts, agreements for A, 403B, 457B, Plan Administration. B, property and casualty insurance. C, student accident insurance and excess coverage. D, stack processing services. The Drivers Education Services.
Sure, so I'll take them one by one. 403B, 457, Plan Administration. It's a requirement that we have a plan administrator, which prevents employees from over-contributing, which would exceed IRS limits. So we use Omni Financial Services to assist us in that. Property and casualty insurance is obviously important that we have insurance for all of our facilities here. The rates have increased less than 2% a year for the past decade. Student accident insurance is not a requirement, believe it or not, under education law, but our policies require that we purchase student accident insurance. Stack processing is, the stack is an acronym for system to attract, system to track and account for children. And it's the mechanism that allows us to receive state aid on the education of our special needs students. And we went through an RFP process, a request for a proposal, and received a proposal from Educational Management Services. We were able to negotiate a deduction in the FIF, down by $4,000, which is being recommended by our KPS department. Our fiscal advisors assist us in our capital borrowing, so we have a bonding anticipation note that we just renewed this year to continue to fund our ongoing construction. And finally, Drivers Education Services is offered through the high school in accordance with the New York State Education Law.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second please. Scott and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments on action item number one? Seeing none, all those in favor? And motion passes, 7-0. Action item number two, approval of 2019/20 non-instructional substitute rates.
So I understand there was some research done in terms of compare comparable schools in the area, and what's being proposed is certainly comparable for major districts. For the purposes of record-keeping, there was rounding up to the nearest town.
Okay, I need a motion and a second please. Eric and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes. How many, I'm sorry, 7-0, or, okay, thank you. I don't know if I knew the, how many, knows. So motion passes, thank you. Number two, approval of 2019/20 non-instructional, we did that one. And number three, approval of waiver of potential conflict of interest between Town of Patterson and Brewster Central School District. It was tabled at the 6/25/2019 Board of Ed meeting.
Yes, and I would put supporting documentation as the actual conflict of interest form. Again, this is a request of the Town of Patterson to agree an inter-ministerial agreement with the school district regarding tax collection. So that's where the town is purchasing, which will assist the district, obviously, in tax collection. And it's a requirement that our attorneys have us, and the town signed this conflict of interest form, which will allow them to review it on behalf of the school district.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second please. Krista and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? And motion passes, 7-0. Number four, approval to separate from employee number 435 per Section 71 of Civil Service Law.
Sure, so Section 71 of Civil Service Law references an individual who's been out for unemployment. Per Civil Service Law, once that individual reaches a year, we are required to terminate employment. So there was a meeting that was held with Ms. Culligan. There was also a deputy present, along with the human director. They communicated that to the individual. So the individual has until July 20th. If fully aware of providing documentation of the district, that is section.
Need a motion please and a second. Scott and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments? So, July 20th, you said, right?
July 20th, March 20th.
So if, so this is assuming, so if there should be some documentation that comes in for some reason prior to that, it would negate this action, then, I assume?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Approval of employment agreement with Kathleen Culligan for Human Resources Services.
Yes, this agreement allows Ms. Culligan, Ms. Culligan to assist Mr. Harrington as he transitions in the district. I want to note that this is a budget-neutral contract approval. We had some turnover within the Human Resources Department, which freed up funds, which is allowing us to extend a contract to Ms. Culligan to assist Mr. Harrington in his transition.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion and a second please. Eric and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Number six, approval of Brewster High School overnight field trip to Peru, February 14th through 22nd, 2020.
Yes, this field trip reached Dr. Gosh and received her final approval to allow our students to visit the ancient Inca, Incan empire, including visits to Machu Picchu temples. So the Social Studies Department's very excited about this field trip.
Thank you. Motion and a second please. Krista and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments?
I just want to say it looks like an incredible trip.
I feel like, can we go?
A trip we came on.
They're always in need of chaperones. I believe it's juniors and seniors.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Approval, number seven, approval of organizations that raise funds on behalf of the district.
Yes, Dr. Gosh sent out a memo to, or a various backpack to Brewster organizations within the district in accordance with Board Policy 3260, fundraising on behalf of the district. There were two Brewster organizations who responded and met the requirements of Policy 3260. And I also want to note that the Brewster Education Foundation, Brewster Sports Foundation, and PTA are not required to apply as per Board Policy.
Okay. A motion and a second please. Scott and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments?
Well, I'd say the two groups, the Forming Arts Boosters and the J.R.T.C. Boosters, they're both very established groups, and they do a lot for the kids.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. And number eight, approval of policies, second grade. 5741 alcohol and drug testing of bus drivers and other safety-sensitive employees. 6212 certification and qualifications. 7211 provision of interpreter services to parents, guardians, who are hearing impaired. Just what it says.
So these were reviewed by the policy committee and are now being recommended to board for approval.
Thank you. Motion and a second please. Danny and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Number nine, approval of instructional services and related services contracts. A, Westchester Exceptional Children. B, the Deveraux Foundation. C, Green Chimneys School. D, Four Winds. E, Hawthorne, Cedar Knolls. UFSD and F, Greenberg, North Castle. UFST.
Yes, so these contracts are pursuant to students' individual education plans. The rates are set by New York State, the rate-setting unit. They've been reviewed by our attorneys, and our KPS department are being recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second please. Krista and Carrie, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Ten, approval of purchase contracts pursuant to competitive bids. A, child nutrition service items. B, transportation vehicle parts.
Yes, these are some of our annual competitive bids that we put out. We advertise through the Journal News and Potters Courier, as well as the Empire State Bidding System, which goes out to statewide group. And what is being recommended are the two boas responsible bidders.
Okay, thank you. Motion and a second please. Glenn and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Eleven, approval of 2018/2019 health services contracts. A, Bedford Central School District. B, City School District, Deputy Rochelle. C, South Huntington Union, B, School District.
Yes, these are mandated reimbursements to the other public schools, which provide health services to Brewster residents who are attending those public schools.
Thank you. A motion and a second please. Krista and Danny, thank you. Questions or comments? And just to comment, in the reverse, obviously, it was true that we're...
Would hold true if we had a private school within the Brewster Central School District, which we do not currently. St. Lawrence was the last private school that operated within our boundaries. Currently, we don't have any private schools.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Number twelve, authorization to establish additional bank accounts.
Yes, this is something that I've been reviewing in recent controllers audits. We often in the business office read controller audits of other school districts. One of the recommendations they made was that we should establish separate bank accounts for each of our reserve funds. So that's what's being proposed tonight, is that we establish separate bank accounts for each of our different reserve funds, which will allow us to better track the interest earned on each of those reserve funds. So it's applied equitably.
Thank you. Motion and a second please. Krista and Glenn, questions or comments? Thank you, I think it's a good idea. All those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Okay, consent agenda. So I need to actually first get a motion to make an amendment to a last name correction. For number eighteen, it should say Marissa Gargano, Galgano, and just to make sure that it's reflected properly. So we're going to first change that, and then we can go around it. So you see the motion to change that? Carrie and a second, Krista, thank you. So all those in favor to change the spelling of the last name to its correct spelling for the record? Passes 7-0, thank you. So now it needs Marissa Gargano on the record. And now we can go back to approve the entire consent agenda. But first, are there any comments on the consent agenda? From the administrators? No? Any comments?
No, just reflects we're close to filling all of our vacancies in terms of probationary appointments. Of course, the temporary appointments are yearly part-time.
Okay, thank you. A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, as has been. Scott and Eric, thank you. Now questions or comments, yes?
I can just excuse myself. I'm the agenda person.
Okay. Yes, as a volunteer, we saw that. Okay, so then I just need, any other questions or comments? So all those in favor of the amended consent agenda? Six, all those opposed? Abstentions, one. Glenn, thank you. Motion passes, 6-0. Six, zero, one. And now we move on to remarks. Any board remarks, committee updates? I have one. I was going to email everyone to ask you what your August schedules look like for our August retreat that we will do with our new superintendent. And so I'll send out that email, but it's just basically, if you can just reply, letting you know when you'll be away or out of town, so I can figure out what dates we all have in common, so I can have her look at it to see what she can pick for our retreat.
This is going to be here?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, this is just the board superintendent retreat. And then I know she and I have spoken briefly about other meetings we'll do with teenagers and stuff like that. So that'll be next. Get ourselves together first as a group, and then go forward from there. So that email I'll be sending out. And that's for me, anyone else? Welcome to our, to new candidates. How was it? How is it going?
That's it, I quit.
Well, it's, this is the first meeting, and then after that, it's easy after that. Okay, so I guess we can move on to public remarks. If you want to, Ms. Hussi, you can come up if you want to say something, please.
I just want to say, as always, the Brewster Central School is an amazing district, and have a great summer.
Thank you. Okay. No one else? And of course, you may always email the board at thea@brewsterschools.org. And executive session, we have nothing else for executive session today. Sure to do where we don't have an executive session. So I just need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Krista and Scott, there you go. All those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Thank you so much, and see you at the August meeting. Have a great summer. Thank you.